I want to be the first, it's probably too late, but I'd like to be the first to welcome you to Autumn Quarter 2016. This is my second autumn being here, and I thought last year, how could I be any more excited than this, my first quarter at UW Tacoma? But I have to admit, after the convo and everything last week, it is even more exciting. It just gets more exciting as time goes on. So, thank you all for coming this morning to let me tell you about what's going on. What I plan to do is this, we'll take sidetracks if necessary, but I would like to update you on everything that's happened in the chancellor's office since our last town hall, which was last May. So, a lot of things have gone on since then. I want to talk specifically about some things in leadership and organizational development that happened since that time. I want to talk about the Race and Equity Initiative, because quite a bit has happened in that arena since May. An update on the Law School, give you a quick enrollment snapshot, I think you might all be shocked, I am, on who is out there this year. Look a little bit, a very early look at our budget development for next year. Talk about the strategic planning a little bit, because I want you all to come to the big event in two weeks. And then, we're going to talk about the Tacoma and the UW launches of the campaign, and then have questions at the end. So, are you ready for all of this?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Leadership Development. Well, I know a lot of these people are in the room, so what I'm going to ask you to do is, when I announce you, if you would stand up and remain standing, and there's just about 10 of you, remain standing, and then at the end, we'll appreciate all of you at the same time, and then I'll ask you, if you can, to stick around for a few minutes at the end, and we still will have coffee and some refreshments back there, and you can meet some of these people personally, if you haven't yet. So, I was accused of causing search fatigue last year, and it did happen, I admit. I was fatigued as well, but boy, it paid dividends for our campus. We got two brand-new deans, and you all met these people as I interviewed in the spring, but we got Anne Bartlett, the dean of SIAS, started July 1st, and Howard Smith, our new dean of the Business School. You're supposed to be standing up if you're in here. There you go. All right. Howard is standing up. Also, in the School of Education, our search failed in the College of Education, or the education program, but we did another abbreviated search for an interim director for the education, and that's Brian McAllister. Brian is in the room. There's Brian. Also, you recall last year, and there's Anne, she just walked in. We'll look at her. Yeah. So, last year, we brought a team to campus to look at everything we're doing with respect to global and international affairs. It was a very productive visit. They gave us a set of recommendations, and based on those recommendations, we elevated the Influence of Honors program on campus, and with that, Divya McMillan, Dr. McMillan, was promoted to Executive Director of Global Honors. She was director before. And then, as Dr. Lavitt began to organize her office, she hired Dr. Taran Kalogu as Associate Vice Chancellor for Research, and Dr. Jill Purdy as Associate Vice Chancellor for Undergraduate Education. Now, I have another slide full. We were busy. And as you all know, our previous Vice Chancellor for Student and Enrollment Services took a position in New York, and I was able to talk a team into replacing him, and we have Kathleen Farrell and Carl Smith serving as co-associate vice chancellors for Student and Enrollment Services. Yeah, let's just go ahead and clap for them now. And let's go backwards and clap for all those people that stood up and sat down. Now, along with that same visit, we decided to separate Global Honors and Global Affairs and establish a new office where we consolidated several of our international activities on campus, in a new Office of Global Affairs, and I was successful talking Dr. Lisa Hoffman into starting that office off, getting it all set up, consolidating those services. So, she's been serving as the interim Executive Director of the Office of Global Affairs. So, we're excited about that. But, that left us with an opening in community engagement. So, who else would I ask, besides Dr. Lynd Isham, to start serving in the role in community engagement? So, there, let's go. Thank you. And, this all kind of dominoed. So, as you know, Dr. Hoffman did community engagement and also spearheaded our liaison work with JBLM. UW Tacoma is the liaison to the military base on behalf of the whole University of Washington. That is not part of Lynd's portfolio. Instead, we moved that to Michael Work, who is in advancement, and Michael was promoted. He's already standing up. He was already standing up, but he's Assistant Vice Chancellor for External Relations and has that responsibility for the JBLM work. Along those same lines, a lot of you know Roz Johnson. Roz worked with Dr. Hoffman in community engagement. She also spearheaded a lot of the work with JBLM. She has taken on an additional role as Associate Director of Veterans and Military Services, beginning in September. So, let's hear it for Roz. Oh, she's here. And then, the last thing was, we did a search for a permanent Director of Vibes. Many of you may have known that Thomas was serving in an interim role. He had been with us all year, and we did a search, and Tom is the best person, and he has that role full-time now in Vibe. So, this is the slate of new people. They'll be back here afterwards, so I encourage you to go meet them if you haven't yet. So, thank you. Now, unfortunately, we're not done. We need to continue the searches for SAES, and we had a visit to campus, I'll talk about that in a minute, before we start the search, but we've recruited Patrick Powell and Andrea Coker Anderson, our registrar, to chair the search for the new Vice Chancellor for SAES. We also have two dean searches that Dr. Lavitt will be overseeing. That's the founding dean of the Institute of Technology, and Ali, Dr. Ali Maderas, and Martine Decock are co-chairing that search. And then, the search for the founding dean, School of Education, is Raj Kati and Matthew Weinstein. So, those are all going to be going on this fall, and then sometime either in the winter or spring, we will have to decide what we're going to do in Global Affairs, because Dr. Hoffman let me know, when she first started, that she is taking sabbatical. And she's still going to take sabbatical next year, so we will have to fill that position sometime this next year. Okay, let's go back to the SAES search for a minute. One of the things that we did over the summer, when Cedric announced he was going to New York, is we brought in the Organizational Excellence folks from Seattle to take a look and interview people on campus, to see how we were positioned in that organization before we searched for a new leader. They brought a team of three or four people, and they were here several days. They did about 50 interviews on campus and gave us a report, and based on that report, we decided to not change anything, to search for the same kind of Vice Chancellor position that we had in the past. They told us that we had a very solid infrastructure and firm foundation in that area for moving forward. They said the staff were very supportive, committed to our students, committed to this campus and its mission. So, they suggested that we not change anything drastically, and we're going ahead with that suggestion, and we are tweaking the position description a little bit, to make sure all the language is supportive of our new strategic plan, but like, mostly, we are searching for the same kind of Vice Chancellor we had before. They also pointed out some issues for us to work on. One of the things they said is, now that we are developing a new strategic plan for our campus, SAES needs to develop a companion plan to that for their organization. They also thought that they should increase their collaboration with other areas across campus, specifically academic affairs, and that was already happening with our new Vice Chancellor, Dr. Melissa Lavitt. So, there's a lot of collaboration going on now, and we will expect our permanent Vice Chancellor to do that as well. They did point out some physical limitations to the space we have, some odd arrangements, and I think that would be expected when you're rapidly growing. You kind of put some things in place and don't completely think through how these will look when you grow to two or three times that size. So, we're going to have to kind of look at our space and see how everything is organized. Likewise, they suggested we think about scalability. A lot of the offices in Student Enrollment Services are one-person deep, so they thought we should maybe concentrate on some cross-planning or cross-training in those areas. And then, there were a few unit-specific functions, but it was a very good report, and the co-interim leaders have that report, and we're moving forward as we do this search. Okay, the programs to schools. You heard me refer to the institute and education now as schools, and that's true. As of September 16th, they were both elevated to school status. Now, when we got that approved, that was great, but unfortunately, they didn't approve more budget for these areas. They didn't approve name changes. We are able to call them schools in status, but they didn't change their names, and they asked us to search for founding deans, so they didn't change the titles of the interim folks leading. But, we were thrilled to have that done, and now we have four schools at UW Tacoma, but we need to have a plan for our other three. So, as we were preparing the report for these two to ask for them to be schools, one of the requests was, we need a plan for all of UW Tacoma. So, we put together a plan for all of UW Tacoma. We said, these two are ready to go, and within the next year, we would like the others to look at getting ready to go. And we put that forward, and they approved these two. At the last minute, we put Urban Studies in as well, and unfortunately, they thought that maybe it was too early, we need to look at more growth and development at this time. So, what I propose to do is, take this year and work with the other three programs, and try to find out what our best strategy is to move those to school status as soon as possible. I mean, we can't move them until they're ready, until Seattle, and everybody is ready, but we want to work on that. We want to keep the pressure on to elevate all those to school status. We feel that all of our programs here are of equal caliber, equal quality. They are different in size, different complexity, but I feel a little bit like we'll leave them behind somewhat if we don't elevate them to school status, and they all deserve to be school status. So, that's where that is right now. The Law School. As you recall, I wanted to show you this slide first. We had a couple caveats to the pivot, when we pivoted last December from UW offering a cohort of UW Law here to UW Tacoma Law School. Now, I was willing to take that on, however, we wanted to make sure several things were in place, and those things were that it would be congruent with our strategic plan. We were right in the middle of launching the strategic planning effort, and while we want a law school, we don't want that to prevent us from doing the other things that we have on our plate. Likewise, we would have to have the support of the flagship campus of the UW Law faculty and dean. We have that. We have great support from the president, the dean, the provost. Everybody supports us in this endeavor, but we also need to have significant funding. We can't take a law school out of our hide, so to speak. That would be a little difficult. It's hard to take a person out of our hide, much less a school out of our hide. So, we are seeking support for that. We have a request prepared, like a placeholder, and what we're up to right now is recall that we have to do a feasibility study. Our association won't even let us entertain this idea without a feasibility study, so we hired Dr. Marty Katz. He's from the Sturm School of Law at the University of Denver. He's been on board with us since, I think, April. Does it say? Yeah, I meant April. He's been to campus several times, and Bill Koontz has been chairing the Blue Ribbon Committee that's been working with Marty to do an evaluation, to see if it's feasible here. When he came to campus this summer, we held several focus groups. He went and talked to the Nisqually Tribe. They have interest in helping us if we move forward. A lot of our legal community came to campus, Public Defender's Office, everybody who's involved in law in the South Puget Sound was on campus to talk to our consultant, and they're also conducting some market analysis with two organizations, Campos and Educational Outreach Unit at Seattle is doing a study for us, too. All of this will come together in the next month or so, and we'll have a set of recommendations, and then we'll have to decide what we're going to do with the information we get. So, that's an update on the law. The Race and Equity Initiative. Well, I want to start this with a picture I showed you last May, and right before, this is May 3rd, and remember, my town hall was May 6th. So, earlier in the week from my town hall, I came into the office, and I found this on the sidewalk. And you know, I couldn't help but believe that our students are right. I'm assuming the students wrote this, but it may have been Tom or somebody. I don't know who wrote this. He's sitting in the front row, so, anyway, it was on the sidewalk. And I feel this as well, and I think our president feels this, and she did say it's the Race and Equity Initiative. It's not forever. She is talking about a four-year initiative to accelerate the development of our campuses. So, we do need to start having action. So, ever since this day, I've kind of tilted my thinking to not just the dialogue that the Race and Equity Initiative has prompted us to have with each other, but also actions, visible, concrete actions that move us towards our goals. So, lucky for us, we were already on board, off and running, getting close to the end of when we were going to launch and approve a strategic plan. Well, if you look at the strategic plan, and I'm not going to show it to you, because it's a secret until two weeks, but it's actually on the website. Many of you have already gone to look at it. You've talked about it at your retreats, I know that. But, anyway, two of our six impact goals are really devoted specifically to these issues. So, we are going to make progress. We are already making progress, and if you look at the other four impact goals, they have race and equity, even though they're about students or our community, all those things are tied together. But specifically, these two goals are going to generate many, many specific actions that our campus can take to make our campus a more equitable place. And the next one, that was the fourth one, and this is the fifth one, culture. And if you read that, our campus is respectful, productive, and inclusive. You can't see it, but there's a coming soon across that, and it kind of got washed out. So, you'll learn about those pretty soon. So, that was good for us, but I don't think that's enough. The students don't want to hear that our strategic plan is going to help us get better at these issues. So, as we were deliberating, several things happened, and you were all here, well, not all of you were here, but many of you were here. But you remember the horrible thing that happened in Orlando, that happened right after, you know, our town hall, and everybody was leaving for the summer. We had commencement on June 10th, and then this happened. And then, right after that, Baton Rouge, the young black men were killed in Baton Rouge and St. Paul. And then, kind of as a result of that, the sniper shot the police officers in Dallas, just rapid fire. And at that point, we couldn't wait for the strategic plan. We couldn't wait for anything. So, thankfully, Ed Morecki, and Kathleen, and Carl, and several people in Student Affairs talked to us about, let's stage something where we can go kind of vent our frustrations and talk and reflect on this. So, we held a Day of Standing Together for Justice out at the Peace Pole. It was a really nice event, but as I was standing there, I was there, that's me, the ball-headed fellow right there. As I was standing there, I thought, we have to start now doing something. Our campus is working on lots of things. We have these two major impact goals in our strategic plan that are going to help us as a campus become more diverse. It's going to help us as a campus become more accepting to all cultures, things like that. But, I think our students and faculty want more. Here, we have assembled a multitude of people who are committed to social justice, to equity, all those things. It's not enough for us to work on ourselves, our own campus. I believe our people want this campus to be a beacon for the world. They want the campus to do something on behalf of all people. So, that's the thing that I struggle with. What should our campus do as a body? Because we need to be very deliberate about that, because it is a large force. 5,000 students strong, 300 faculty and 300 staff strong. It's a large force. So, as we move that force towards doing something positive, we need to be deliberate, thinking about that. So, what we committed to that day was hosting a series of active discussions. Okay? So, and I committed to this while I was standing there. I was thinking, what can I say? And I said, we'll start with this series of active discussions. And the way they're designed is to first, we have to be, I've been listening to my friends enough to know that first, we have to be brave. We have to be a little bit active. Not a little bit, we have to be a lot active. So, the first speaker that's coming is Bree Newsom, next Thursday, or maybe the Thursday after next Thursday, the 20th. She'll be our first speaker. If you don't know who that is, I've tried to go learn a little bit about her. She was the young woman who climbed up the flagpole and took down the Union Jack flag in South Carolina. So, she will be our first speaker, and talk about being brave. Now, I'm not advocating for you all to climb up flagpoles. If you do, don't say you're from the University of Tacoma, you know, you're on your own, but as a campus, we should be doing something of similar, you know, impact in the world around us. So, she's going to be our first speaker. Our last speaker they're negotiating with right now, I'm not at liberty to tell you who until we get everything taken care of, but the last speaker is the same caliber of person or persons that will be here. So, what we're still working on are the topics in between, and what I've asked the group to talk about, to sponsor in between, is utilize some of our faculty talent, utilize some of our community talent, maybe even our students, to put together some discussions in between, and the result at the end of the year will be a very well-thought-out strategy that we can take as a campus to do something larger than just right here. So, that's what's going on. We will talk about those ones in the middle. We'll talk about discourse, freedom of speech, all those kinds of things, because remember, we're committed also to be a very civil organization that respects each other as well as we move forward. So, this is kind of a busy slide, but I wanted to let you know, there are other things going on besides the active discussions. So, while these active discussions are going on, the students haven't waited till the end. They're going to do something on October 19th. They have an event called Inspirational Voices. I don't know a lot about that event. It's kind of been quiet in the background, but I assume it's going to be of excellent quality, and it's going to be right here on our campus on the 19th. Other things that we're doing, we've opened a meditation space. That's one of the things our students ask for. We have many diverse cultures on our campus, growing numbers of those cultures, and it's an inconvenience for them to be in class if they don't have a place to have their prayers or their meditation. It's part of their lives. We do have a little room up in the Y, but you've all walked up to the Y. That's hard to do three or four times a day in between class. So, we opened up WG 233. It's going to open today or Monday. I don't know which day. Monday? It's going to open on Monday, and it'd be open all the time that the building is open for our students, faculty, and staff to go have a spot to do that. Likewise, we were asked to work on a biased incident reporting mechanism on this campus. We were asked by several people, our students, by the Race and Equity Task Force put this forward. So, we did that over the summer. Ricardo, and Sharon, and Melissa, and many of you in the room worked together, and that is just about ready to launch. I believe it's active in the background. It hasn't been turned on yet, but we're trying to make sure it's ready before we put that out there. So, the campus is moving forward on concrete action to take care of that. Also, Melissa is working very hard on evaluating and revising the faculty hiring process. That's kind of the number-one goal that our students have asked for, is they've asked for our faculty and staff on this campus to more closely mirror the diversity that they bring to the table. And Carl can tell you that the diversity of our student body is even increasing more as we move forward in time, which is a great thing for us. And then, along those same lines, our colleagues in SAES are hosting a series of those standing together events this fall. I think our students appreciated that time to reflect and talk and visit, meditate on things, so they're hosting a series of those this fall. And then, another thing, the Diversity Blueprint, many of you may have seen that document before. It was first released in 2010 as a UW3 campus document. It is being re-released as an updated document, and it goes right along hand-in-hand with the president's Race and Equity Initiative. It is more like the concrete behind it, the things you can actually do. It puts more teeth into the expectations for the diversity of our hires and things like that. So, that's going to be released sometime, I would assume in the next couple of weeks, you'll see that. Okay, budget development. I'll just quickly go through this. This is very early. We already have a budget for this year, but we have to start now, working on the budget for next year. So, we have some base assumptions. Our base assumptions, first of all, I want to increase the transparency of the budget process and get wider input. Now, I worked on this last year, but it's difficult when people aren't ready for that. So, I'm trying to get the campus more ready for that, more engaged and more prepared and educated about the budget process, so you can input. So, that is moving forward. We have a Budget 101 kickoff on, I think, October 24th. We put together a campus-wide budget committee, which we call the Campus Budget Committee, CBC. We still have our Executive Budget Committee, which is charged with executing the budget, but now we have a campus-wide budget committee that's made up of our deans, our directors, our vice chancellors, our students, our staff, and our faculty leadership. All those people together, it's about 30 people strong. We're going to march through this summer and prepare ourselves to give input to the budget process. It continues to assume there's going to be no increase. In fact, we're in a 10%, or 5% or 10%. We're in some percent decrease from last year. And, yes?
20%.
No, that is the basic tuition. Graduate programs can increase, you have to ask, but graduate schools or graduate programs can ask for budget increases. But undergraduate, the legislature has actually decreased tuition, which is kind of why we're in a little bit of hot water. So, last year, they did backfill that. We have no guarantee that they're going to backfill in the subsequent years. So, we may be 5% short of tuition money. We're assuming, this is good news, unless you're in charge of the budget, assuming another 4% compensation level next year. Our provost, Jerry, who's in charge of the budget, he is committed to keeping salaries up. So, we have to, and the state won't give us 4% guaranteed. This year, it was 4%, and the state gave us 1.8. So, the 2.2 kind of had to come out of our hide. So, over time, that gets more and more difficult to do. So, Melissa is continuing then to match the faculty searches with where the demand is. We don't have a lot of flexibility to do programs anymore that aren't going to have students in them. That seems logical, but anyway, it's necessary. It's not only logical, it's necessary. We want to fund the strategic plan. We didn't go all the way through that year exercise and then say, we can't do the strategic plan. So, I've committed to putting at least 1% of our budget towards the strategic plan initiatives, and we're going to learn how that's going to work in two weeks. Kathleen's going to tell us about that. With these assumptions as a minimum, we still need to think about about 200 additional students' tuition next year to keep our budget flat, and I've asked the vice chancellors to look at approximately a 1% reallocation, to look internally to what we do, so that we can redeploy some of those funds towards the future. So, that's a beginning of the budget. Lot of water between here and the end of the bridge, but that's the start. Enrollment Development, it's like, wow. These numbers, headcount numbers are as of the 6th. What day was that? Yesterday? Okay. That was yesterday. 5,012. That's exciting, unless they're all in your class, and you have to grade all those papers. But, we were planning, remember, the late chancellor had planned for a 7% growth rate. And when I interviewed here, there was concern that maybe that was a little aggressive, and we needed to tilt back a little bit. So, we did. We tilted back to about a 4.5% growth rate, and we built that into last year's budget. Okay? And our enrollment management folks, our Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, all got together and made sure we were recruiting students into those areas where we had room. And even with that, look what is happening. 5,000 students. When you have something really good, when good vibes are going on, people want what you have. Students are coming. They're coming to our campus, and we need to serve them. Now, one thing that's a little different here is, we have a new program, Biomedical Sciences, which has about 100 of these students in it. So, that's a new faculty serving those students, and hopefully soon, a new facility. It's the Tacoma Paper and Stationery Building, which I'll talk about in a second. So, those we have accommodated for, the rest have been more difficult as we've tried to squeeze them in places. So, anyway, that is where we are as of yesterday. We'll know for sure at the 10th day. What is the 10th day, Carl? Do we know?
Today.
Today. So, maybe later today, we'll know kind of officially where we are. All right, the Student Success Task Force. I just need to quickly tell you that, remember last year, before we started, or when we were starting the strategic plan, there were a couple things that couldn't wait. The Student Success Task Force couldn't wait, our enrollment management, and you can see that it was a good thing that we got right on the enrollment management last year, but the Student Success Task Force made a lot of headway this year, and they're, the the Student Success Task Force made a lot of headway this year, and they're, the product of what they did is fitting right into the strategic plan implementation process. If you don't remember, that was led by three of our professors, Lisa Hoffman, Bonnie Becker, and Deidra Ranor were leading, heading that up. There were approximately 60 faculty, staff, and students who got involved with that effort. They kind of bifurcated into our, or broke out into eight smaller groups that worked on things. And over the summer, I began to see initiatives come right out of this Student Success Task Force. If you've seen the first, first-generation initiative on the website, highlighting some of our people on the campus that are first-generation students, just like our students are, that came out of this task force. The students put together a resource guide over the summer. There are many things coming out of this task force, and it's going to continue for a while, but what we intend eventually, well, this task force, all the work, will just fold into the strategic plan and then into the fabric of UW Tacoma as we go along. So this, think of this task force as kind of a jumpstart to the whole process that needed to get us going. It couldn't wait for the strategic plan. These are the people that served on the task force. Many of you in the room will see your names up here. The names in italics are students, I believe. So if you're interested in this, you can contact, I think, who is doing this now? Deidra and Jill are leading the task force now, because Bonnie is on sabbatical and Lisa has taken the role as global affairs, but they're moving forward. Strategic plan? Well, we are here. We followed the timeline that we told you we would. Everything worked out great. On the 20th of June, we agreed, and the strategic plan became a reality. We received the next day, or maybe two days later, an email from Richard. I'll never forget that email. It said, "Ta-da!", and he had the strategic plan attached to it. It was, it's a Word file, but you're going to see a way cooler version of that in a few days. Come to the event, and you'll, you'll get one, or two. So that event is on Monday, October 17th, in this room. It's more of a celebration. We are going to talk to you a bit, give you some of the details, and we'll be around to talk to you more after the program, but it's mostly a celebration. And we want to celebrate because now we have a lot of work to do to make that a reality. We've recruited some, some speakers, some people that were involved in putting the strategic plan together, and some folks that are going to be involved in implementing the strategic plan as we go forward. I'll get to talk a little bit. Our student body president will say a few words, one of our community members will say a few words, and then we have a special guest that I invited to come talk to us about the plan. Can't tell you who, because then you would know, and I want it to be a secret. I think it's one of the coolest people that have spoken on this campus, and that includes me, cooler than me. So I'm really excited about this, the quality of the person that's going to come and talk to us about our strategic plan. So come. Now, I want to show one diagram of the strategic plan while I have your attention in here, and then we'll kind of move on and we'll be finished here shortly. This is a diagram that shows you how important this is to me. If you think about it, just think of this big rectangle being the way that the university works right now. It's like a machine, big rectangle. I have this cabinet, which has the vice chancellors, who are responsible kind of for the major units on campus. We have the governance groups, we have the deans and directors, we have our community. All of those groups are represented on the cabinet. The cabinet listens to all the things that come up, all the decisions that have to be made, and makes recommendations to me and my team as we move forward. So that's how it normally operates. What we've done is we've created the strategic plan that can be a lens that we look through with everything that we do. So everything that we do will be strategic and planned, strategic plan-informed daily work. So everything we do should be informed by that. However, you know, it's a big ship. We're 5,000 students strong, we've been here for 26 years now. It's hard to turn a big ship that's used to doing things one way without a front-and-center strategic plan. So think of this strategic plan coordinating committee that we're going to talk more about at the launch event, but Kathleen and Marcy are heading this committee up. Think of that as a tugboat. It is going to help push our ship forward. So what we're going to do is we're going to allocate 1% starting this year of our budget to that strategic plan coordinating committee. So those, some of them will be on the cabinet. Some of them are officers of the university, but their specific role on that coordinating committee is to make sure the initiatives that we fund through the strategic planning program implementation project are direct and center on the strategic plan. They're across the university. They're not just ideas from one little spot or another little spot, but they're things that can be integrated across several areas. So that is what we're trying to accomplish with the strategic plan. It's going to inform everything we do. I'm really excited about that. But come in two weeks. Okay. Well, that's just another, I really want you to come, you can tell. Okay, the campaign launch. This is exciting as well. October 21st at Heck Ed, Alaska Airlines Arena, the basketball court at the UW. Going to be an outstanding event. All you need to do is go to this website and register. I've registered. We hope to have 9,000 people there, is that right, Josh? 9,000?
10,000.
10,000. 10,000 people there. It'd be an event that you don't want to miss. Before it starts, there'd be kind of a party or a reception out on the lawn to get everybody, it's not a lawn, it's probably a parking lot, but out front at Heck Ed. There'd be a really good party, and afterwards, there's going to be an outstanding band, kind of like our, our speaker at the strategic plan rollout. They won't tell us who, but it's a really high-quality band. Maybe Anamari is going to sing or play in this room. Anyway, you should come. It's going to be something you don't want to miss. And then, after that, in January, we're going to personalize it to UW Tacoma. We're going to have our own event, series of events for a week long to start off the year. First, internal faculty and staff on the 5th, and then on the 7th, we're going to transform one of our spaces here on campus into a beautiful venue to have a launch party of our own for UW Tacoma strategic plan. Ignite your passion for greater Tacoma, is what we're calling it. So make plans now to be there. Okay, this last couple of slides, you all know what this is, even though it's covered up with paper. I got a tour earlier this summer of the facility. It's coming along so fast. Do you know, this project is ahead of schedule and under budget. So it's very exciting. It will, it will be ours in the spring, and then we'll have to, we'll have to equip it, because it's got laboratories in it, so we'll equip it and have it ready for students next fall. Now, while this one is ahead of schedule and under budget, this one is not. Now, this was earlier in the week, you can tell by the color of the sky, it was way earlier in the week, but it's getting close. And if Harlan were here, he would know. Does anybody in the room know what our projection is? It's October 14th, so that's the middle of next week, you know? So hopefully, you've been avoiding this, and it hasn't been too much of an inconvenience for you, but it will be finished, and it will be way nice when it's done. So we tried to get them, this is, it's not our project, it's the city's project, but we're doing some things under the street as the city works on this with response, or with respect to our project. And then, the last thing is Court 17. In July, the border regions, actually it was before, the meeting before July, the border regions approved us buying Court 17. We bought that, we closed in late July. It is all ours now, and all the floors are UW Tacoma students. So we're in the residence hall business, very exciting. We cut the ribbon yesterday, had kind of an emotional speech from a couple of our students about how homey it feels and how they feel such a part of this community. Berkan was, he continues to be one of the sweetest men I know in his comments that he has for us about his family here, because you know he's from Turkey. He's our student body president. It was just a really emotional day yesterday, and we're in that business now. So with that, let me stop and see if there are questions. We have 20 minutes or so. We don't have to use it all. It's one thing about being thorough, is you don't get a whole lot of questions. Yes?
[inaudible]
Do you want to give the microphone?
Does Court 17 have a cafeteria? Where are they?
No, Court 17 does not have a cafeteria. Who knows more about Court 17 than I do? Ed. Ed cooks for them.
Initiatives that we're launching this fall. One, there'll be a new market on the first floor. That's the expanded food operation of Finance and Administration, so that'll start to meet those needs. We're also thinking about this as, from a campus perspective, so yes, we have close to 300 residents that we need to make sure are being fed, but all of our students, staff, and faculty need to eat too. So we're looking at a program, expanding use of the Husky card with vendors in the immediate area. We've set up some delivery programs with Safeway and Whole Foods. So we're trying to be innovative and use community resources to meet those, the food needs for the current time. And we hope to launch some things later this quarter or two, and we'll be sharing that information widely with everybody. Does that help answer your question?
And, and I want to follow up just a little bit what Ed said, Lauren. One of the ways that the strategic plan will address this is we've charged ourselves with having our students achieve their dreams, and if their dream is to be healthy and well-fed while they're going to school, we're going to have to figure out a way to solve that issue. And Ed was very good at talking about, we, we don't know exactly all the ways we're going to solve it, but that's going to be on our plate. That's a good pun, on our plate, as we move through these next five years to address that concern. There was a question back here, yes?
Hi, thanks. That just brought up for me, I only just learned this year, and this is my sixth year here, that we are 30% food insecure, and, and so what you're talking about made me question, how much of what that, that strategic planning is, is about us all eating, and how much is that including, inclusive provision of basic needs and, and making sure that students who are food insecure also might have access to those resources?
Well, that's a, that's a very good point. I'm glad you brought that up. We, we do have our new pantry, which was launched in April or maybe March, I'm not sure exactly, which was launched for the purpose of dealing with what you've talked about. That doesn't solve the problem, that was the first step. So all of those things need to be put on the table, and again, you're going to force me into talking about the strategic plan. I said I wasn't going to do that. But the strategic plan is open, I'll just say it's open where we can address all of these things through that planning document. It's flexible. Good question, yes?
Hi, this is a passion of mine. In 2013, I did a study of the students here at UWT, and that's where we got the 30% are food insecure, and that's hunger. That means that even if they have a Husky card, they can't afford to buy food. We have students in our classrooms who are hungry. The other thing is, we just opened a young adult shelter four blocks away from here, and 10% of those people are going to UWT, because in the study that I did, 18% of our students are homeless. And so one of the things with the food pantry, I went to various organizations on this campus, and it wasn't until we got to the Division of Equity where they finally just addressed the pantry issue. So one of the things I want to say in here is that homelessness and hunger are among our population, and I think while we have, I, strategic plans, strategic plans need to be for the students, but not, that doesn't solve the social justice issue of being able to afford to go to school and deal with the issues of hunger and housing.
Thank you. And?
I was just going to ask. The food pantry. Please use the microphone. Okay, sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry, Patrick. I would like to know, how can we contribute to the food pantry and to other sorts of resources for students with cash or food?
Do you know the answer to that?
Yes, it is. So.
Hi, everybody. So to help with the food pantry, they are subsidized through Pierce County, through FISH, Pierce County Food Banks. So you can do that through the UW Combined Fund Drive if you want to make financial donations. The other thing is, on October 17th, we're having a UW Combined Fund Drive kickoff. So we're partnering with the pantry to also have hygiene products, because FISH Food Banks doesn't provide hygiene products. So we're going to be launching out an email next week through Harlan to just tell folks to please come to our kickoff. We're going to, we set up donation areas, but we'll have a box there, and there's specific items. But you can also bring non-perishable items over to the Diversity Center or over in Mat, I think it's 107, if I'm, if I'm correct. So if you have, when you're going shopping, and you know, this is the time of year where everyone's getting like extra pasta, cultural spices, and you're just not sure, please connect with Ricardo over in the Diversity Center, and he could tell you the specific items, because we also want to be culturally sensitive to folks that want to have those spices, like saffron's really expensive, but that makes me feel like I'm at home. So there's ways for us all to give to help our students, but FISH Food Banks is one way to give, definitely, because it does help. And they are working with advancement to try to get help through creating on their donation. So there's going to be a lot of things coming, but it's a great way to give.
Thank you, Susan.
I, this is my second month here, and my question is, how does the food stamp program work in Washington State? During our orientation, I went online and checked the requirements for people to get food stamps. I wanted to know, does the campus advise students on how they can get food stamps, or is it difficult, or does it happen?
Well, Rose, unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question. Rose's question was, how does the food stamp program work in the state of Washington? Does anybody in the room know how it works? Do our students have access to that? You know? Yes, here we go.
So what used to be, we all still call it food stamps, but it's officially Supplemental Nutrition something-or-other program, SNAP. That program operates through DSHS, and so students, or anybody who may qualify for those services can obtain them through Community Services Office of DSHS, which in Tacoma is just right up 19th Street at State. But you can also apply for those benefits online. And so I think that, you know, perhaps, well, this has been my little hobby horse for a couple, three years now, around having a social worker on campus who can assist students with exactly what you're talking about to, to do those things, to, to apply and, and get other benefits they may be eligible for as well, and not even realize they're eligible for them.
Also, we have a food bank just up the hill at St. Leo's Food Connection, where students, anyone can go. There's no proof of need needed for them to obtain food. They can come a couple times a week if necessary, and they can get food for as many people as they need in their household. And it's just up the hill at 13th and Yakima.
Thank you, Barb. We have a question in the back, right there.
All right, thanks. So yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit about the conversion to schools. In some ways, I feel like that process is a kind of, creates a path dependency that will then sort of say, well, this is the, we're sort of set in stone, this is the way we're going to organize the campus, and I've felt it for a while that maybe we haven't had enough of a conversation about just taking the existing units and turning them into schools, and obviously, that's already happened to some degree. I'm in IS, and I've never been entirely sure that IS should stay as one big unit. I'm, not that I'm convinced it shouldn't, but maybe we could have more of a conversation thinking about, what are the appropriate ways to imagine our future that might mean the schools would be configured differently than just taking the units and going ahead with them in that direction?
I think that's a very good point, and I am, am not fixed on my vision for how that would work. I do know that oftentimes, it's, it's pretty difficult to ask units to subdivide, and I think at, at Seattle, any division that we did like that would have to go through an official curricular process as well. But I'm completely open-minded to, to whatever it takes to bring all of our programs in a logical way, you know, that we don't want to do something that's not logical, to elevate their status to, to schools. It could be through a combination of putting things together, breaking them apart. One of the things that we have coming up is a visit from the provost. All things that have to do with finance and academic matters, you know, go through my office to the provost's office at Seattle. Dr. Jerry Baldisty is our current provost. He's going to be our provost for two years. He's coming to campus on the 26th of October. He'll be here for about five hours. There's a student section, a staff session, and a faculty session. I encourage you to come, talk to him. We're trying to get some clarity from him and from you as faculty on how we move forward. Another question. Well, refreshments have arrived, and I ask you to visit with some of the new Well, refreshments have arrived, and I ask you to visit with some of the new leaders on campus that came here, visit with each other, make a connection, stay as long as you like, and enjoy the rest of your quarter. Thank you for coming.